Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, man. I'm glad. 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 I'm glad.
So that sidebar, you know the sidebar.
Sidebar.
You're right. You're all right.
We're closing in on time with our city attorney maybe running a little late.
He's been walking.
We got, we got time to get both of them.
Down, brother.
We're getting close. We're getting close. Everybody ready? Works. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start with prayer tonight. We have Pastor David Boss, Senior Adult Pastor from West Side Baptist Church, lead us in prayer this evening. You're standing.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the day you blessed us with today. And, Lord, we, we love you and we, we're so sorry for the times we've disappointed you today. We ask you to forgive us and to help us finish strong for the rest of this day for your honor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for the blessings you provide us individually as families and as a city. We give you thanks. We come to you tonight asking you a special blessing upon our council members, Lord, that you will fill them with the things they need to successfully carry out the business of this great city of Eldorado. Lord, we lift you up to them. Prayer has your protection around each of them and their families, Lord, and for this city. I pray you'll be with every individual and every family that is roaming around tonight. Be with everybody. Protect us with your guardian angels. We thank you for your son, Jesus, whose resurrection we just celebrated last Sunday. And we pray, Lord, that this city will catch fire for you, that so many will come to know you. Use us all in a mighty way. Help us each be a shining light for those that need to see a shining light this evening and tomorrow and the days to come. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Boss. Join me in the prayer.
........................................................................
I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome. I'm glad all of you can join us tonight. We've got four parts of our business to take care of tonight, so I don't think we're going to run low. Adam Hurst.
David Hurst.
Here.
Frank Cash.
Here.
Vance Williamson.
Here.
Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
Present.
George Calloway.
Here.
Buddy McAdams.
Here.
Diane Hammond.
Here.
One change down into the new business tonight. Mr. Singleton could not be with us, so Sarah Kaufman will be stepping in if you need to make a note for the works board. Okay. We've had opportunity, I hope, to double-check the minutes for March ninth meeting of this year. I would entertain a motion.
Kevin.
Adam Clark.
Buddy McAdams. Vance Williamson. Judy Ward. Diane Hammond. Willie McGee. Frank Cash.
Aye.
David Hurst. And George Calloway.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of council, you'll find in the bottom of your packet the check run for the last month, so you can peruse those. As I've let you know in the past, if there's anything that gets your attention that you'd like to, that we'll check, please join me in my office at any time and we'll pull the file for you. It is there, so we're good. Now, moving on to new business. We have a resolution for condemnation.
Whereas there are numerous dwellings in the city of Eldorado that were public nuisances, said locations, and owner being more particularly described as follows. Street address 622 West Wesson. Owner: Carolyn Jackson, 622 West Wesson, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated. Street address 808 Petroleum. Owner: Zachary Lovett, 1305 North Rose, Roseline, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated. Street address 916 Short West Second. Owner: Ricardo Ramirez. 914 Short West Second, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 1212 East Wesson. Owner: Tequila Cooper Freedom, 505 Ondo, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated. Street address 118 Line. Owner: James Balo, 134 Woodland, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: burned. Street address 1215 Mary Lane. Owner: Margaret Taylor, 1215 Mary Lane, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, unsafe. Street address 930 Lockhart. Owner: LG Sims, 303 South Park. Reason for removal: dilapidated. Street address 928 Washita. Owner: Morris Graham, 928 Washita, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, unsafe. Street address 506 EMB. Owner: Joe Curly, 506 EMB, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 1325 Southwest. Owner: Oyama Williams, 318 Marable Hill, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe. Street address 6 and 1/2 EMB Street. Owner: James Gator, 1412 East Short, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, unsafe. Street address 818 School. Owner: Minnie Snyder, 1854 Lawson Road, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 517 Carrington. Owner: Laquinces, Cheltenham, 2211 East Main, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: burned. Street address 204 North Smith. Owner: Louis Marquez, 3745 Mountain Holly Road, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 716 East Faulkner. Owner: Sherry Lowry, P.O. Box 11243, Eldorado, Arkansas. 71730. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, and unsafe. Street address 1822 Roseline. Owner: Demetri Reister, 1826 North Roseline, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 1130 Maddox Lane. Owner: Albert Samuels, 1130 Maddox Lane, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, unsanitary. Street address 1131 Maddox Lane. Owner: Freddie Miller, 1131 Maddox Lane, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 727 Eldorado Avenue, 500 West Cook, 1312 Louisiana. Owner: Tony Bartonian, 600 Northwest, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 1511 Martin Luther King. Owner: Wayne Arnold, 216 West Fourteenth Smackover, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 1517 North Roseline. Owner: Andrea Brown, 5213 Natalie Drive, Little Rock, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 1323 West First. Owner: Hey Good Deal Garden Apartments Inn, 2171 Judicial Drive, Suite 200 Germantown, Tennessee. Reason for removal: dilapidated. Street address 1414 North Miles. Owner: Helen Pollard, 4608 East 88th Street, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 511 East Block. 1500 H.A. Street and 1216 North Gray. Owner: Indian Creek Properties, P.O. Box 132 Hat Hill, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 1818 North Roseline. Owner: Angela Watley, 6540 Galen Drive, Apartment 169 New Johnsville, Tennessee. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 620 and 1/2 Lewis. Owner: Martin Reed Williams, 3138 Country Club Boulevard, Stanford, Texas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe. Street address 705 North Newton. Owner: Lamont Thomas, 300 Millers Drive, Sherwood, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address 718 Eldorado Avenue. Owner: Johnny Davis, 501 West Cedar, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 433 Melrose. Owner: Louis Hampton, 433 Melrose, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious. Street address 614 Thompson. Owner: Eric Henry, 716 West First, Eldorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal: dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Whereas the fire marshals and Code Enforcement Division for the City of Eldorado, Arkansas, have determined that the above listed dilapidated and vacant structures constitute a fire and health hazard and are unsightly or unsafe due to abandonment or neglect. The structures are deemed detrimental to the health and safety of the citizens of the city of Eldorado. Such structures shall be declared nuisances to be dealt by resolution of the City Council of the City of Eldorado, Arkansas, and then removed pursuant to Section 7-341, etc., of the Code of Ordinances. Whereas the City of Eldorado has given 30 days notice to the owners listed above and attempted to notify owners certified mail addressed to the last known address in compliance with state law and city ordinances. Within which said nuisances are to be removed by having mailed a true copy of these correspondences and posting for 30 days on said property. For those houses with notices that have come back undeliverable, the structures may be removed immediately. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eldorado, Arkansas, that the houses at the addresses and locations mentioned herein above be and hereby arced and deemed and declared to be nuisances to the City of Eldorado, Arkansas, and authority to proceed to remove said nuisances. Your answer.
Will you entertain a motion? Adam Clark.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Willie McGee. Buddy McAdams. Judy Ward.
Aye.
David Hurst. George Calloway.
Aye.
Diane Hammond. And Vance Williamson.
Okay, moving to our next order of business.
While we're on this subject of these houses and things, did you read Tia's article today?
Uh, briefly this morning about five o'clock.
Well, apparently we've only taken down 12 houses in three months. That gives us, right now we got 18.5 months' tenure rears, and we just added 30 more. What, do we have a performance expectation out? It's all contracted, isn't it? That's diversified doing it for us?
Yes, sir, they are. And then the plans are this fall when our road work slacks off, we'll put a couple crews beside the contractors taking those houses down. That's why we're stacking so many other ones coming makes sense now.
Okay, I just wondered, you know, it's quite a, quite a bite we got to do here. I just want to have a plan that, you know, take care of it.
And, 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 Mr. Cash, too. The weather's not been kind to us for the last couple of weeks.
Get out there and take these houses down in the rain. We can't, we can't, we can't.
Martin. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that we've been, have a high volume of taking them down. And the last list, there was a couple people called me. There was a gentleman who was trying to catch up with a couple people that they didn't actually know who to talk with. So I spent about a week and a half trying to talk to Kirby and the code enforcement officer, back and forth. He came by my house, some other people. I, I just think that here we, we got a bunch of houses. When people want to know about how to go about to get their house off this list, they need a specific person that they can talk to, not run around and talk, in my opinion. I don't think our citizens should have to call me, the code enforcement officer, the inspector. I mean, all of these people, and then this person get told several different things, and then come to find out the house get towed out. They was trying to work on it. I think we can have a better way of communicating. You used to go through the mayor office. If somebody wanted to try to go on to their house, they came up to here, they talked with the code enforcement officer. They set a plan. Had so many days to rectify bringing it up the code. Right now, I don't think some of these houses probably should be rehabbed, some need to taken down. But when people want to try to keep their house, I think we need to try to make sure and help them all we can. But we also need to get them a person that they can go to and give one story, what they need to do instead of several different stories. Once again, I'm talking about communication, and I'm talking about trying to pinpoint whether they come to your office or either to the water commission. Because right now the water commission is over Public Works.
If they're just calling the Public Works office, Mr. McGee, we'll take care of that. We did the lid for the household by the river. And then a couple of.
I, I, I agree. This is a good, this is a good strategy. But also, they need to know, once they do contact the Public Works Department, that Mr. Kirby and the other code enforcement officer on one page. So these people won't keep running around. And I don't know if nobody else has this problem. But to me, that, that's, that's a problem when they don't know exactly what ago who talked to. Robert said Public Works, all right? Some people know, still think Public Works up here, some people. So it's, it's a confusing thing that I spent almost two weeks dealing with. Okay, and I just want to share that. Now, I don't know who didn't call the Public Works, who going to make sure the code enforcement officers get it. But I'm telling you, I spent two weeks on trying to help a gentleman contact and get something done. And I don't seem like I should have done that, should have do that. And I'm just vetting, so if you take.
That's up to you, Mr. Edmonds.
I don't want to take it. I just think that we need to make sure that we understand that we got two committees, and one of them, both of them seem to do a little vote.
So Mr. Edmonds said, do you have that person when they contact?
I know Mr. Edmonds said, but, but some kind of way, we got to have some type of accountability. When I tell this person to contact the, the Public Works, I want to make sure I get a feedback saying, okay, this person, we going to help this person, or we can't help this person, or we going to tear this house down. Because this person keep calling me and asking me what, what, what's going to happen. I don't know what's going to happen. So that's what I'm talking about, Miss Ward. Thank you for trying to clarify it for me.
I'll, I'll make it perfectly clear. I have yet to turn anybody away from seeing me in my office, okay?
Well, it took, it took me about, it took me about a month to see you, Mr. Cho.
I told you, just whenever.
No, I called you several times. I called you several times and you was ass up coming up. And I just happened to walk up there one day and you was in the office, and that's how I caught you. So thank you.
Well, I, I don't make a practice of canceling appointments.
I even asked you, I mean, Colonel Calloway going to meet with you on some issues about our war.
And, and I think I, I think.
It'll be May, and we only meet once a month.
Mr. McGee.
And I'm, I'm not going to run you down, Mayor. I'm a city councilman. I should be able to call you and say I want to meet. I mean, Colonel Calloway want to meet, and you should make a way to make sure we meet.
Mr. McGee, I think I made it perfectly clear when I responded to your last request for you and Bishop Calloway to come see me.
A day ago.
Sir.
That was a couple of days ago. I'm talking about, I've been asking you ever since January for us to meet.
Mr. McGee, I'm here every day.
Yes, sir, we're, we're going to try to have that meeting again, isn't it, Mayor?
Mr. McGee.
Thank you.
You do understand under the Freedom of Information Act, why cannot meet with two of you?
Unless we call the newspaper. And I don't see a problem with the newspaper.
I don't have a problem with that either.
I don't have a problem with it. I want the newspaper to know our issue that we dealing with.
Okay, now let's move on. Okay, we have an appointment to the complex, the sports complex commission. Nicholas Dugan, which I have yet to meet, is, Mr. Dugan in the room? If not, it has been brought to my attention that he is the nominee to take the vacant position for the complex commission. And I believe everyone has a copy of the application for that commission position in front of them. And I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
Adam Clark.
Buddy McAdams. Judy Ward. Frank Cash.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. David Hurst. Willie McGee. And Diane Hammond.
Okay. Next, we have an appointment to the Eldorado, Eldorado Works Board. And I do believe Alvo is in the house. Alvo Bartonian has been recommended to take that position. Yep, there's Alvo in the back of the room. Thank you for coming, sir. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Senator.
Adam Clark.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee. Diane Hammond. David Hurst. George Calloway. Frank Cash.
Aye.
Vance Williamson. And Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I would like to move on and introduce Sarah Kaufman. That's the change in your agenda. Mr. Singleton couldn't make it. She has a couple pieces of business for the Eldorado Works Board.
Good evening, everybody. We met yesterday, and several things were presented to us. One was the Murphy Arts District, Pam Griffin. We approved the $200,000 for the playscape for their 2023 budget. This comes out of the Eldorado Works Community Development Fund. Murphy USA is going to match it dollar for dollar. The playscape we found is now taxes in, which will save us money in the future. We also approved the Eldorado City Kinnels, which was approved for $594,341. This comes out of the Eldorado Works Construction Maintenance and Nondiscretionary Fund. And that's what we approved last time along with a nominating Alvo, that you're really pleased to have him on board with us.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
Any questions, sir?
Any questions?
200,000 for the playscape. If I knew, I'm going to ask for it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think Pam is up here.
Good evening. I'm Pam Griffin, President and CEO of Murphy Arts District. And yes, that's our operating budget for 2023 to run the playscape. We've had some, our, our budget for 2023 is actually $290,000. However, we have some carryforward costs that are mostly related to capital expenditures that were from 2022 that did not get spent. And so we're carrying over some of the money we received for 2022 to cover part of our 2023 budget for things that were already paid for with the 2023 money.
Capital items out of your capital budget, not out of the operating budget?
Capital items to cover improvements for the playscape.
But you're asking 200,000 for the operation of it?
It's both, it's both again.
It, it had capital and operation that was in that budget. And, and a lot of it didn't get, not get done in 2022, so there was a carryover. They came in, it was original ask of 290, but there was carryover. That was your total budget.
I think those are two things.
Well, that's what I call capital expenditures are really maintenance issues that are over $5,000. And so there are things like placing the mulch. We had wood mulch, and now we're doing rubber mulch. And we still have some of that mulch replaced back in the back along the fence line. We have some erosion issues on the dirt clay hill that we need to fix. We have some fiberglass peeling off of the razor back. This is the centerpiece of the splash pad, and that needs to be fixed. We were going to fix that last year, and we've actually been struggling to find a vendor that can repair that properly.
That's separate from operating.
Well, it's just regular ongoing maintenance is basically what it is. But I call it capital expenditures from an accounting standpoint because it's over $5,000.
Okay, now that 90,000, is that coming from the 400,000 you get last, for last year?
It was $300,000 for 2022.
Where's the 90 coming from?
That's the deduction that we're taking off of the 2022 budget to account for the money we received in 2022 that was not spent. Came off of your 2022 budget. Yes, yes.
This is a dilemma. It's money left over from. It's the way you account for the money.
It's owing you.
It doesn't matter how you account for it. You don't pay in advance on something, you pay by invoice on something. The money is there.
You put it ahead of time, it's like a CD.
No, you don't. You buy, you, you prove fuel on the budget, but you don't go to Mr. Sull and give him the whole darn amount of money upfront. You pay your essential charges in each month. That's the same principle we need to do here, but we're not operating that way. You're spending public money. Fuel on it, you'll owe it when the alderies get here. That's, but it's passed to alderies every year. I'm going to approve the request from the Eldorado Works Board.
Get into this conversation if it's appropriate for just a couple of minutes, or one minute.
We need, we need a second before we have discussion.
They're going to break this into two pieces. There are two separate and distinct items we're going to deal with here. Until I have a motion and a second, we will not move on to discussion.
You have a motion, and I make a second on it so we can go into discussion.
Okay, for which piece?
He made it for both.
The mad conflict. Two separate items, two separate votes.
Well, Mr. Reeves, what was your motion?
For discussion purposes, how about that?
We got a motion and second for the playscape.
Correct.
Can we have a discussion? Can we have a discussion? Can we have a?
Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, I know it's a period. We got to have a debate on stuff, we got to have a discussion about that. And I'm, I'm just concerned, and you know, I understand all that. I understand all playscape. We got, we got to spend a lot of money on that playscape. And, and then, we can just end another day, and Mr. Gadda was talking about finding money for the swimming pool over at Metta Spire. I, I'm just, when we. I, I'm, I'm just, when we actually passed that, that, them taxes and I was a part of going around to this community and telling people that when you tax yourself, that everybody was gonna get a piece of this pie. Every community, every ward is gonna be able to access this, this money that we actually taxing ourselves. And, and, and I'm just really concerned that everybody ain't getting a piece of this pie. Because every time we talk about something on our side of town, we gotta find the money. We ain't got no money, but we gotta find this money. And then we sit here, I do, now Rev just got it, but I sit here and I see time after time that things get passed that only benefit certain areas of this community and our ward. We have almost tooth and nail just to get anything to even have a discussion over there. And every time we have, let me finish, please. And every time we have this discussion about something that Ward Three, we think that need to be done or just need to be replaced that was already over there. We have this long thing, well, we can't find the money. We don't know where the money don't come from, it costs so much. But we done paid for the, paid for the playscape twice.
And that's in Ward Three?
Ma'am, please don't, uh, interrupt me when I'm talking, please, 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 ma'am. Because this board over can overrule your board. We have a final says so. Y'all just make recommendations. Thank you. But I'm telling you, it might be on downtown Ward Three, but in our neighborhood, it is awful. And every time we ask for upgrading in our neighborhood, we have to fight tooth and nail. And I'm just kinda sick and tired of that. Because this board can overrule any board that we self commit. Y'all just bring recommendations. I'm, I'm through, go ahead.
I have a question.
Do what you want.
This tax, we got two more years for this tax. What are you gonna do to, uh, run the playscape when the tax is in twenty twenty-five?
That's a great question.
We got a request. This is city money. I'd like to see an itemized statement on your operating budget, state money.
Sweet, Jimmy.
Mr. Downham sent that out to the council and the E W B the other day and he probably just didn't know that.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
No.
George Callaway.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, the second.
Thank you.
The second part is on the kennel for our dogs, uh, five hundred ninety-four thousand and change.
I think to approve that.
Senator.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Willie McGee.
Yes.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
George Callaway.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
That concludes our new business for the evening. We have no old business to deal with. Uh, we've got a period in time if there are any council members that have anything they need to bring up this time.
I will, I will, yeah. I just wanna make comment on this last thing. It really bothers me. We, we willing to spend five hundred thousand dollars on dogs, but we won't spend five hundred thousand dollars on a kid. We have to find the money, that bothers me. The second thing, I'm glad Mr. Rush and you are here tonight because I truly think there's some things that, that we have done and we have done up here and at that other commission that is not appropriate place to do it. And I would like to know, not only this commission, not only this body, but the Water Utility Commission. Because basically, when we brought the Water Utility Commission back under umbrella of the city, that literally make you part, since you the city attorney, you should, I feel like, be at every meeting. Because you are the city attorney. We brought this Water Utility Company back under the umbrella of the city. So us having two lawyers and nobody seem to know what the left hand and the right hand doing, I wanna make sure I'm in legal right. I, I, I do. Uh, I, I, I don't have no money to be sued and I don't wanna go to jail. So I want a lawyer to tell me, or you tell me, do you, is I'm, is I'm talking crazy or do I have a problem?
Oh, I think, I think having some guidance is, is a valid point and we've had some conversations and I believe there's a request been made that I attend those, those board meetings and that's, that's what we'll move forward attempting to do.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Anything else from the council?
One correction, our next meeting will be Thursday, May the eleventh, not May the nineteenth.
Everybody get that? May the eleventh. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Moving on, if nothing else comes forth, Mr. Ash. Okay.
On the twenty-ninth of this month, we are going to have the cleanup in Ward number three. Uh, at the time, we always, uh, give recognition to and respect to Brother Reed and to Brother Henry. And we wanna make sure that we let the entire council know that will be going on. Cause as many as possible, we'd like you all, uh, participate. That date was, came out, said the twenty-second. When I talked to Ms. Van Hook and, uh, she agreed and we're gonna go to their meeting and they're gonna let us leave it on the twenty-ninth of this month.
And what time of the day, sir?
What time is it?
From eight-thirty to eleven.
Eight-thirty to eleven.
And hopefully the last thirty minutes, hour, we can do hot dogs and stuff over the park.
And anyone who has a group of ten or more people, you will be rewarded. And it doesn't matter whether you're Ward Three or whatever Ward. But if you have a group organized of ten or more people, they can come and help in the cleanup and be rewarded.
Of the ten group, of the ten.
Of the ten.
They got to have ten people and.
None more than ten.
It needs to be youth.
They need to be kids.
Yes, cause that's what we're trying to, to teach, to teach the parents.
I don't know, but when I actually talked to Mr. Robby, he said, he didn't make it matter how the ten was made up, but if it was all kids, have a chaperone.
Right.
If you didn't have ten kids, it could be adults added into that.
That's correct, but we are focusing on the youth.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I'm just saying.
But if we can't get ten kids, we get five kids and five adults, let the others make the group.
That's right.
We just wanna pick up people.
Okay, I think Mr. Hash had something to say?
Uh, yes, sir. On, in February's meeting, uh, you put forward eight people to be put on, uh, nominated to be put on commissions. That was never voted on. So make it right, city council needs to consider those and vote on those, just like they done act tonight. So, uh, and before you do that, David and I want to switch. We think we can better serve with our expertise and experience in different roles than we got appointed on. So I'd like to go to the airport commission and he'd like to go to the, uh, complex.
Well, that was actually something that doesn't need to be voted on.
It certainly does. You wanna read the regulations, Mr. Cho?
Well, what, can we take that up after this meeting?
No, it needs to be taken care of right now.
I don't have the regulations in front of me, I would prefer.
I'll give it to your attorney sitting right beside you. Uh, this particular one here is the airport commission. Fourteen eight fifty-nine.
And the, is this commissioner shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by a three-fourth vote of the elected and qualified members of the city council?
Yes, and it goes to all of them.
Good as legal, most conditions. Mayor has the time to review nominations to a commission, he makes the nominations.
That's correct, just like we've done here tonight.
And I would like to have time to review my nominations.
Any good, that was all you got.
Those combinations are null and void until you consider what you're gonna do. And I wanna be on the airport commission and David wants to be on that? I wonder why you would not just go out there or not be on the office, take one.
I'll take it under advice. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming.